Carson Vice, come to the front please.
I'm actually Carson Sutton.
Okay.
Welcome Carson Sutton.
Hi, I'm Ben Griffin with Tischler Vice.
Actually that would be me. Because they're not going to take notes.
All right, can y'all hear me?
Yes sir.
Perfect. All right, so again, my name is Ben Griffin with Tischler Vice. We've been contracted to update your impact fee study. We do this work all over the country, impact fees, fiscal impact analysis, capital improvement fees, things like that. All right, so specifically what we were tasked to do is take a look at your parks and open space fees, your fire fees, your police fees, and your transportation fees. So we'll do a quick refresher on impact fees. So they're one-time payment for growth-related infrastructure, generally assessed at the time the building permit is collected. You pay them once, so it's not a recurring thing, it's just whenever you issue that building permit, then you pay your impact fee. You don't use them for operations or maintenance. It was pointed out that the Baldwin County Act does allow for resurfacing of streets if the need for that resurfacing is due to development. So that's the one caveat up here where we say no replacement. So it's no replacement for everything except for road resurfacing, in this case. It's not a tax, it's more like an agreement to build infrastructure, but it needs to essentially pass what we call the three-prong test. So first you have to prove need, so that's additional development, so saying that we're going to continue growth in housing units, we're going to continue growth in our non-residential square footage. That's the first way we work out the three-prong test, prove the need. Next you have benefit, so we need to make sure that the fee payer receives some sort of benefit from paying that fee. So we want to make sure that if we build a park, it's not too far away from the payer's house, that way they can actually receive some sort of benefit. Or if they pay the fee, that you actually do build something with that fee, so that's the other type of benefit. And then the last prong of the three-prong test is proportionate shares, we want to make sure that we allocate demand for different types of land uses based on some sort of metrics. So it could be police calls for service to split police demand between residential and non-residential demand for services. Generally, we look at three types of methodologies for impact fees. The first is going to be cost recovery, so that's really looking at the past, so if you've already built something and you have excess capacity, you can use impact fees to have future development pay for their share of that existing capacity. Next incremental expansion, that's really looking at what's on the ground today. So how many square feet of police facilities do you have per person, or per job, or how many acres of parkland do you have per person? And do you maintain that going forward? And then the last of the three is a plan-based, where it looks at the future, so it says, all right, well this is what we want our level of service to be in the future, or we know that we need to build this project, and this is what we need to do to get us there. So eligible costs, you can do facilities and improvements that are required to serve new development, you can't do maintenance or repairs, you can't do operating costs, yes, except for roads. You can recoup excess capacity in your existing facilities. If you want to increase your level of service, you need to have some sort of funding mechanism in place, that way you don't charge your future development a higher level of service than your existing development. And that's one of the big fundamentals with impact fees, you can't charge future development for more than existing development is getting. So in this case, if you wanted to raise your level of service, then you would need the general fund to fund part of that future improvement to raise the level of service.
If you're deficient.
Yes, so we were talking before this, and level of service is very important with impact fees, like I just said, you can't charge future development for a higher level of service than existing development receives. So different types of methodologies look at level of service differently. So an incremental expansion methodology, we would say, all right, we want to maintain our current level of service. Well, it's really important to figure out if your existing level of service is your desired level of service. So if you're deficient, if you have fewer police vehicles in need, if you have fewer fire stations in need, you can be maintaining a deficient level of service. And with the talks earlier today, it sounds like, especially with police, there may be a deficiency, so depending on what methodology we use, we could be maintaining a deficient level of service.
Who were those talks with today?
Officer Holbrook.
You talked to the police about this earlier?
Lieutenant Hendrick was in there. The point too is that if you don't do this study every so often, then when you do become deficient in an area, you can't make up that difference in impact, you're only going to be able to, those funds can only go to, does that not happen? Maintaining.
Right, so it's just as we go through this, we really need to think about, is our existing level of service our desired level of service? And if it's not, what do we do to fix this? And so we'll have some opportunities to discuss that as we actually get into some of the fee categories. So this is just an outline of the process, the most important thing is looking at existing development and figuring out what your base is today, because that's half of the existing level of service calculation, is figuring out how many people do we have, so whether that be with your housing units, apartments, if you're looking at your commercial or office development, how many square feet, or how many jobs do you have? Because that's how we're going to measure our level of service going forward. And then we have to project future development. Next, we look at the existing level of service, so that's when we match anything that's on the ground now to your existing development, so we can say this is our current level of service. Then we figure out the appropriate indicator of demand. So for parks, our demand indicator would be persons. If we're looking at police, it could be persons for residential, but then for our non-residential development, it could be the vehicle trips generated by that development. In some instances, you may use jobs per thousand square feet. But really, it's just figuring out what the best indicator for demand is for each type of infrastructure. We're going to look at the different types of methodologies, so the three that I mentioned, cost recovery, incremental, and plan-based, and which fits best with each type of infrastructure need. We will look at the need for credits, then we calculate fees, and then it's on to the adoption process. So for credits, we generally look at three different types of credits, so there's site specific, so if the developer builds something that is included in the fee study, so for example, we identify a park, and the developer donates the land for that park, then we would need to do a credit for the land component of that, to make sure that future development is not charged twice. There's debt service, so if you have debt, and say your property taxes are securing that, we want to make sure that the future development isn't paying an impact fee, but then also paying a property tax that would also go to retire that debt service. And then, again, just dedicated revenues. So gas tax, that's generally not something that comes up a lot, because it's sort of a flat revenue, or it's a decreasing revenue, but really just making sure that whatever we charge future development, that we're not also charging them in another way, and essentially double-dipping. All right, so this is just a quick summary of the growth projections from the land use assumptions document we provided. So we're saying that over the next 10 years, we're looking at about 8,300 additional residents, and that's about 3,700 housing units over that 10-year period. For non-residential development, just over 4,000 new jobs, which equates to about 1.58 million square feet over that 10 years. So that's how we're, again with the three-prong test, we're proving need by saying that we're going to grow by a certain number of housing units and jobs. All right, so, and that is tiny, but for fire, we're looking at two components with this, so there is a facility component, so that's your fire stations, and then there is an apparatus component. And so what we're showing right here is that for 2018, we have just under 23,000 square feet of fire facilities, and so if we maintain that current level of service of fire facilities to population and non-residential vehicle trips, then over 10 years, we would need an additional, I think it's 8,400, sorry, it's a little blurry.
Eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, about 8,400 square feet. And so that's about $2.7 million to maintain your current level of service. Over the same time period, you would need eight additional apparatus, and that would cost you about $1.6 million. So this is using the incremental expansion methodology, and it's just saying that whatever you have today, we want to maintain that going forward. So this doesn't take into consideration, maybe you want a couple of stations because you're at a deficient level of service, it's just saying, if we maintain this going forward, we need about 8,400 square feet of fire stations, and we need eight additional apparatus. So if that were the case, your single-family fee would be about $900, and your current fee is about $800, so just a negligible increase. While we're waiting on Matt to come back. All right, so like I said, the single-family fee, if we use an incremental expansion methodology, would be about $1,000, and your current fee is about? Thank you for that. For your commercial or retail, the proposed fee is about $1,300 per thousand square feet, whereas your current fee is $841. And this is a trend that we're seeing across the country, just construction costs are increasing, and the amount of technology that goes into new public safety facilities is much greater than it was five, 10, 15 years ago. And so any fee that's sort of holding the line, or only increasing slightly, that's pretty much not the norm that we see across the country.
Was that 1,300 or 1,100?
1,300.
Where it had about 841?
841. All right, there we go. All right, so next up for police, this includes police facilities, includes police vehicles, equipment, and the animal control facilities. So if we were to maintain our current level of service, you would need about 9,500 square feet of additional police facilities over 10 years, so that's going to be about $3 million. You'd need 14 new vehicles, so that would be about $560,000. You would need four additional units of equipment, so that's about $97,000. And I believe the animal control was about 1,200 square feet. So because you don't have a large facility right now maintaining that, you're not going to generate very much to go towards that, but it was about 1,200 square feet on that.
This is over 10 years though.
Over 10 years.
So it's just maintaining what we have.
Yes, so keep in mind, if your level of service isn't where it needs to be, we're just going to maintain that deficient level of service. So if this were to be the fee, then your single-family fee is about $750, whereas your current fee is 149. So that's a pretty substantial increase. And, so I'm trying to get the commercial, I think it's about 1,200, whereas your current is 182. Any questions?
We're going to copy this.
Yeah, yeah. I can make sure that I forward it to you.
Okay. I have to, like, the big report, but not this.
All right, next up, parks and rec. Again, this uses an incremental expansion methodology, so over 10 years, to maintain our current level of service, we would need 75 additional acres of land. So this 5.6 million, that includes the cost of purchasing land, but also improving that, so putting park amenities on that land. You'd need about 1,600 square feet of rec facilities, which would cost about 5.5 million, and then you would need three additional park vehicles, and that would cost about 73.5. So if this were the fee, your single-family fee would be about 3,000, whereas your current fee is just under 2,300, so we're looking at an increase of about $700. These fees are not assessed to most of your non-residential categories, you do currently assess a park fee to your lodging, so the proposed, or sorry, you don't, but we would suggest that you do. And so if you were to do that, we're assuming an occupancy of 1.5 persons per lodging unit, so that would include a bed and breakfast, that would include a motel, hotel, anything like that, then their park fee would be about $1,900. And that's just a way, because you have a seasonal population, and because this is a tourist attraction, your visitors are going to place demands on all of your services, but at least with park facilities, if they're here on vacation, they can be using those facilities, and so if you were to charge, you could justify charging about $1,900, because if we're assessing per person, and it's about 1.5 persons, then that would be the fee. Now, transportation, we didn't quite make it to that in the meeting earlier, but as I understand it, there is a need to look at transportation projects differently throughout the city, so in some areas, you might need to look at traditional adding arterial lane miles, or adding turn lanes, but then in some other areas of the city, more of a multimodal approach, so getting people out of their vehicle, and onto their feet, or onto a bike, and so looking at pedestrian improvements, bike lanes, those sort of improvements. So we may have to look at our transportation in different zones, or by different types of projects. But we are in talks of nearing down that project list, and that should be within the next couple of weeks, have some draft fees, or at least some projects on that to bring forward. So this is where I turn it over to any sort of questions that you all have.
Questions, counsel?
Questions, counsel?
Yeah, I guess so. So you broke this down into components, fire, police, recreation.
Correct.
So you would sum those needs up, add each of those, and so you would come up with a, with a figure that, in, in the streets to be determined.
Correct.
You would sum those, each component up and say this should be the fee placed on, say, a single-family residence or a commercial?
Correct. That, yeah, a total fee, and then you can compare that to, you know, your, your current total fee. And then, you know, just keeping in mind that if it's, the fee is more than 1% of the development cost, then you're capped out at that, that 1%. So you wouldn't receive the full amount through the impact fee.
I guess I had a question about that. I was, I was thinking we were capped at 1% and that this was more of an exercise in determining the percentage allocation of that 1%. How are we going to divvy that up?
Yeah, so the first thing is, you know, figuring out the maximum allowable fee, so making sure that we have all the components in there, making sure that we proportionately allocate costs to different types of land uses. And then going in and figuring out, you know, what's, what's the allocation going to be for each type of fee?
If you would let Eric just mention a couple of things that might also help with some of the pricing, if you don't mind?
As we're collecting these fees, as, as he mentioned, we're capped at 1% by the enabling legislation from the state, but it's 1% of the construction value of the building, actually, it's fair market value is what it says, plus the land cost. So there's a 1% cap there. The fee schedule, I was telling him, the fee schedule that we have in the current ordinance, nine times out of 10, I can't use that fee schedule because I hit that 1% ceiling first. So, but even, you know, if you assign these amounts that he's talking about into an overall fee, it's basically a percentage for each of them. So that would establish a baseline for a percentage, so in the event of a $250,000 house. The ordinance says I'm supposed to collect a $4,184 impact fee for that house. 1% is $250,000, so I can collect a $2,500 impact. So then I'm assuming if that's collected, it goes to Jill, and then they, they break it down percentage-wise based on the percentages in the ordinance. One of the other holes that we have, that I had mentioned, was it's, it's been the policy for years, as long as I've been collecting the fees, that if there is an existing building on a property, they do not pay an impact fee if they redevelop that building. And use has never been taken into account. If there's a building there, they don't pay a fee. We've had some instances here in the last year where we'd have a 1,200-square-foot house taken down and a 6,000-square-foot, three-story office building built there. They didn't pay an impact fee because that's been the process up to this point. And we've got some others like that, as, you know, things are purchased and demolished and redeveloped, that's something we need to address.
That's our policy.
Because that's been, it's been internal, that's, you know, as, as I came in, that's how I was instructed to handle it, that if, you know, there was a previous building there, that they did not have to pay an impact fee.
You're saying you've been instructed that way? What are the ordinance?
It's ordinance.
Well...
It is the ordinance.
Yeah.
Following the ordinance.
Correct. Well, let me say this, the ordinance, I think the language on that is vague enough that it's whatever they want, you know, that's, that's how they wanted it enforced. So that's what I've been doing. But we've got some where we're taking down residential units, or we're taking down storage buildings, or we're doing whatever, and we're coming back with a much more significant use, that we're not collecting impact fees on those, on those structures.
See, that would seem to be fairly urgent.
I think so.
Yeah, that, that's a little bit more complicated than that. I mean, what are you going to, so a family of 10 moves into a house, are you going to charge them an impact fee if a grandma just moved out?
I mean, it... Well, no, and I'm talking primarily, the residential fee is what it is. The residential fee is that. What I'm talking about is, you know, in one specific example, there was a 1,200-square-foot house on Magnolia that was taken down, it was a single-family residence, and we have a three-story office building there. The impact for the infrastructure is proportionally more for the office because you've got more vehicles, you've got more trips going back and forth than you would have had in a two- or three-bedroom house. But, you know, and, and so if the purpose is collecting impact fees to handle roads and infrastructure needs of additional impact that a building's causing, that's where we have a hole in the ordinance that we need to really address. And if you choose not to address it, that's your choice, but I wanted to make you aware of it.
So I want to look over.
And something else, just reading the, the state ordinance, of course, it just applies to Baldwin County, but there is a component for schools and flood water and storm runoff that we might want to consider putting a portion. We're never going to get more than 1%. It's just really analyzing that and, and making sure that we feel like that's a fair allocation for those different departments.
Did the state come up with that 1% cap?
Yes.
Because they thought that was a reasonable rate of growth. But when you have rampant growth like we have, it's kind of...
Yeah, that was...
You'd get more.
It was Representative Byrne at the time in the state, and, and that was capped, that it could be, we could charge no more. And I think that impact fee ordinance is strictly to Baldwin County.
It is.
So it's, and actually, the unincorporated county, the Baldwin County Commission, has the legal authority to require impact, impact fees be paid, and to my knowledge, they don't. But you have municipalities that have chosen to exercise that. But when they created the legislation, they put the 1% cap in there.
Will we be given, then we'll be given, you have a, a full report that you'll be coming out with when you finish the...
I did the draft.
Streets component?
Yeah, so essentially, once we narrow down this, then we can do the fee, and we can be about it.
Then it'll be exactly what you say. We'll look at it and decide whether we accept that or massage it. We'll see if there's a great disparity between our current percentage allocations and what these numbers is exactly what you said, you'll, you'll come up with a percentage allocation.
Right, and also, back up so you can see, you know, if you look at the top left, it has fee component. So we show that, you know, the cost per demand unit for each one, and so if, you know, fee is too high, we can look at, you know, what each component does to the fee. So you could pull out one if you even want to, but you generally get an idea of what each component does to the overall fee amount.
From our earlier discussion, I mean, months ago, I remember, basically, we, we set the allocation percentages, but we need this report to, to back that up. Keep us, keep us in line.
And you can choose, I think there's some limitations as to what you can spend impact fee money on, as far as utilities and things like that. But you can decide within those limits what you want to spend that money on. If you decide, we don't want to give as much to this, but we want this to be more, you have the right to do that. So it's really kind of a reevaluation after, I think, the original ordinance is like 10 years old.
Right.
And we knew what the city was facing in 2007. What are we looking at in 2018? Is it...
I think it's important just to, and the ordinance says, I think, two, five years, because then, you know, we're keeping up with that growth, and we're not, we can use that whole 1% for what we need to. Right now, it is increasing or, or showing the growth based on a deficient number, you know, in my opinion.
Excellent. Anything else, counsel?
Yeah, I also want to type, you know, the, the legislation says new development. I think that's a little bit too loose, if you will. You have, say, an infill development where the infrastructure's been in place for decades, an empty lot sitting there, and somebody builds a house. That's not, you know, it's a new house, it's not a new development.
True, but like, we have, something's coming to the planning commission we're looking at today, where there is a house on a large lot, and it's down in the Fruit Nut area. They're about to make three lots out of that. So what would happen in that case?
Well, that's a new development.
It is, so one of those three lots would get credit for the impact fee for an existing structure, not having to pay it, and they would not pay a water or sewer tap fee for the existing structure. But the other two would pay new water sewer taps and impact fees on those other two lots. One of them would get a credit for it.
Right. I'm just saying a single lot with a single structure going on it.
Yeah, if it doesn't exist today, it's considered new development, future development.
How you want to look at it? Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Fly Creek Sampling Report Presentation, Casey Callaway and Kate Kistler. How are y'all doing?
We're good. Well, you know, we're, we're good. Thank you for this opportunity. We, we're hoping, we, when we asked to speak to y'all, we wanted to talk solely about the Fly Creek study that we started last, end of last year, and finished and completed, and did all the analysis as of the beginning of May. What we have experienced, though, over the last several days, is we've done our water quality sampling in, in advance of the Grand Man Triathlon, which is Saturday, and the Jubilee Kids Triathlon, which is Sunday, and the testing results are pretty abysmal. So we've got a, we want to also talk a little bit about that with y'all today. They both feed each other, so I think it makes sense. To start, though, on the Fly Creek study, we want to really thank y'all so much for giving us the opportunity to do it, for listening to the constituents, your constituents, who are very concerned about sewage spills in the area. I think what we were able to do, especially as a third party removed, go through Fly Creek and look at it comprehensively, and figure out where the problems were. Kate's going to go over in detail a little bit with y'all on what we found in the, in the study, but I think we have to commend you on, you know, taking, listening to your constituents, listening to your community, and moving forward. We also know that we've got other places that we really have to dig into. I think this probably would not have been Richard Peterson's top priority location because of what he knows about Tatumville Gully and some of the other areas that are, that are under maybe greater stress. But from a community and a use perspective, this was a great place to start to really get good information. It was great for us, too, to figure out how to do all these different pieces. Do you want to talk a little more about the results?
Sure. Once again, we appreciate y'all giving us this opportunity. You know, what we found is, is detailed in the report, and I'm going to kind of get the broad findings, and then y'all feel free, if you have questions about specific pieces, to, to ask. But we saw, you know, probably the number one finding that I think we identified was like these intermittent high levels of bacteria in the lower part of the watershed. And the reason that I'll start with that is because that's the part of watershed where you're going to have people swimming in the water the most. That's the area where people are kayaking and playing. And we saw those a lot of, oftentimes after rain events. So I think total of the watershed was about 28% of our samples, about 37 out of 162 that came back with bacteria levels above EPA threshold for swimming. And this is bacteria that's associated with fecal contamination in our caucus. And so about 20% of those were found in that lower part of the watershed, which is somewhat concerning. Those levels, although they were above, were not often in the extreme end of, of high levels, as Casey mentioned, like, we've seen, I think, in Tatumville and Big Head Gully. So that was, that was the, the positive aspect of that, and they mostly followed rain events. Some other things that we saw were some very high bacteria levels in the headwaters in the upstream part of the watershed out near Highway 181. Those were, were pretty alarming. Fortunately, they were in an area where, if you're familiar with that tributary, it's extremely small, has a very low constant, a low volume of water moving through it, and there's a number of farm ponds downstream. So we didn't see those levels, you know, showing up at, at County Road 13, which was our next site downstream. And that's kind of how we did this, to be able to isolate where, where we had high levels and where they were moving their way downstream. In both cases, we did find these little bit elevated levels, sometimes very elevated, sometimes moderately elevated levels of something called optical brighteners, which as detailed in the, in the study, is something that comes from detergents and soaps, and where you find optical brighteners, you have a human wastewater component. So that was something that led us, led us on to the fact that where we found those high levels of optical brighteners, we're looking at either some, some portion of that high level of bacteria being related from septic or sewage waste. We also saw, I guess, kind of wrapping all those things up, that turbidity levels were generally low, but there was a pretty big discrepancy between the study that ADEM had done some years ago and the depth of Fly Creek in the area between US 98 and Scenic 98. And then getting a little bit into some of our recommendations, I think, you know, we, we identified those higher levels, especially like near the Devil's Hole area and Sunset Point while they were intermittent. That's an area that a lot of people, especially near Devil's Hole, are enjoying. And so we, we think that, you know, an investigation of that sewer main and lift station right there, that's like off of Creek Drive, sewer main and the Sunset Point Lift Station, you know, is definitely something that I, I think would be recommended to, to understand what component of the bacteria levels that are elevated there are coming from human wastewater from our sewage lines. That's something that, that applies broadly across the city, of course, with the GMC study showing the 60 of 180 miles being clay pipe and uninspected unlined. So Richard's put a good plan together, I think, for a lot of that. And so that, that falls right into, to that plan that he's putting together for rehab of sewer mains and lines. Establishing a septic tank inventory to understand where is this, where is this Fair Hope sewage lines, which there aren't a ton of, I think you can see that on page 11 or 12, are the Fair Hope sewer lines that are in the watershed versus where it's septic, which I think is on the, the following page from the sewer lines. And so having a good idea of what's causing the problems in different areas is going to be a big, big deal. And then make sure you got requirements for people to take care of those things and when working with the Department of Public Health on that. And we have worked with them throughout this study. We're happy to help provide more of this information that's in this map to Richard and to the city as they need it, as well as any, any other information that's in here. We would love to continue to work with the city. And then, of course, finishing that pump-out station, I know there's a plan to have that in place very soon at the marina, and I think that's really important, and making sure there's strict requirements for its use so that people are, are taking the time to go use that. I think that may have had some role to play. We also talked about a few other recommendations that were outside of the bacteria realm that just had to do with Fly Creek generally, comprehensive land use plan, important to understand how you're going to grow throughout the watershed as well as the city so that you can protect those watersheds. That's something that's going to prevent any of these issues where we saw the, the shallowing of the creek and have heard people talking about having trouble getting their sailboats out of the mouth of the creek. A Fly Creek Watershed Management Plan, that's something I know the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program has prioritized and wants to work with the city as well as stakeholders in the area on, and it's going to be a big boon to the city to have something in place in that regard. And then a long-term monitoring plan, so you can keep seeing, you can document improvement, and you can document what's going on, and your citizens will, will know where it's safe and when it's safe to swim, those type of things. So like I said, I've got more information, but I didn't want to overwhelm us at the start, so if y'all have questions about specific aspects.
Yeah. Kate, okay, Casey, almost combined your first and last name there for short. Thank you all very much. I think this is extremely vital. When you first sent the draft out several weeks ago, I, I went through it fairly thoroughly, and then upon looking at this again, my recollection is, was pretty decent about this. Other than the very extreme headwaters and having the very high bacteria concentration, probably due to livestock. As you pass Scenic 98, there really isn't a high concentration. There's very little incidents, and even just past Scenic 98, there's very little incidents. Counsel, I see, I'm looking at the page, I see a number, the graph, the chart right above results and discussion, figure five, actually. That page and the very next page are two pages with the bar graphs, and you see the acronyms for the names where they took the measurements. And if you start looking at, and I'm going to just leave out the, the F, just use the last three letters, if you look at the CMO and the CDH, the, don't look at the CHO because that was at the headwater, the CDT, you start to really see a pattern. And the pattern that I see is, is where the great density of boats are. And there's also a great dense, much more greater density of population, but the population is actually from that point all the way to Scenic, and we're not seeing bacteria all the way back to Scenic. And without incriminating some people, we really need to take a look at the waste being dumped off of boats. There are three marinas there, and without accusing them, I, I would love to find a way to test that. We know our lift station hasn't been active, I mean, our waste station, but that's no excuse for people to dump waste in. And I'm probably, I'm sure it's violating some, maybe even federal law when you do that. If people don't even move their boat, and they're staying on their boat that much, I have a hard time believing they're not using the facilities on their boat. I'm just being perfectly honest here. And we need to... And we need to somehow find a way to, to test that because to me, that is a smoking gun.
We, we found that as well. And, and knowing that the pump station was coming online pretty quickly is excellent, but we, we worried the same way. I mean, just because there wasn't a pump station doesn't mean they shouldn't have been.
Doesn't mean they have a right to do it.
Exactly. So, but the other thing that is there is rain. And as, as much as I want to blame rain on every sewage spill that we've ever had in our lives, we can't. It rains in coastal Alabama. So the only other spikes we found consistently was when it rained. And it's likely that that's what we're seeing today on the bay, throughout the bay. But as the GMC study said, we have 175 miles of clay pipe, of pipe, sorry, in Fair Hope area, 60 miles of which is unlined, uninspected clay pipe. We know that that is not 2018 pipe. We know it's old. So we know we've got a very high likelihood of our gorgeous oak trees and other trees infiltrating those pipes, that we've got breakages in lines. We've got to, we've got to invest in the inspection and then we've got to inspect, but then we also have to maintain. And getting that into the system next is a major, major deal. It's, it's not unique to Fair Hope. We also, what we're seeing on the bay, we don't know that we can blame on Fair Hope or a marina or will certainly not rain. We've got Daphne. We've got, you know, downstream operators. We've got a lot of, a lot of challenges that we're facing. We would love, Kate says, I would have to pay him a whole lot more money if he could pinpoint what the problem was, and I can't. I don't know if I have that.
The rain is perplexing.
Rain is perplexing, but our systems have to be able to manage it and handle it. And a lot of it's from our house to the street. I think we've talked about that in the past. If we've got a break in our line, if we've taken the cap off of the, or, and I've heard, I think Mr. Peterson did a presentation for y'all on some of the things that folks are doing to kind of bypass the system or get the rain off their yards, is we're pummeling it into our sewer lines, not stormwater lines, but sewer lines. And we've got to figure out ways and paths to address that on the whole.
Would that manifest itself? What I'm trying to do is tie that to the high bacteria regions in Fly Creek.
Yeah, every time you have a spill, every time you're adding water, every time sewer is leaving your system, it's still sewer. It's not, just because there's rain in it too and it's quote diluted. My least favorite ADEM line is dilution is the solution to pollution because it's still...
Once it goes, it surely is diluted.
It should be, but we're trying to like...
I just wonder how it's migrating to this, to this area.
Right. I think maybe the closest pipes, if you look at that...
It's like to be a lot higher concentrations other where, other places along the bay. I don't know how it's propagating up the bay.
We don't see Fly Creek as a major culprit problem. And I think that Mr. Peterson has pointed that out as well in saying that Tatumville Gully and Big Head, Big Mouth Gully, sorry. And, oh, sorry, Gully. But, and then there are probably some other places that we see it. And we know south, in the southern part of the area, that was a big GMC lot, you know, they called that area out for being near capacity. And if you're near capacity with just the facility, the, you know, houses and buildings that you have on the site, and then you add rain infiltration into that system, then you've, you've created a much more significant problem and a very high likelihood that it's leaving the system.
So luckily in Fly Creek, there's not as much of the infrastructure. It's not as, you know, there's the little bit on Creek Drive and then there's a lift station at Sunset Point that'd be worth looking into, but it's not as much tied to that, although we did see those optical brightener levels that show the human waste, whether it's from a boat, a septic tank or sewage is in there. So luckily, that's not our main issue in Fly Creek and, and we may not have as, you know, and that being the creek that people are most swimming in and kayaking in and playing in, that's, that's good to see. I think where, you know, all our other watersheds that, that we know do have some other issues based on, I've seen some of that testing that Richard's done. He's passing those numbers and we're seeing 40,000 and, you know, some of these numbers like we saw in upstream throughout the watershed. So those, you know, we talked to Richard about maybe doing some more studies like this and some of those other watersheds, and I think that'd be something that'd be really beneficial, but, you know, we know that, that there are problems and taking care of those is going to start to help what's going on in the bay. Obviously, high lows in the bay can result from a lot of causes. There's a whole lot of people upstream. It's not just Fair Hope, but obviously y'all have perusal and jurisdiction over taking care of what's going on here. And so we hope to see, to see us keep, continue moving forward.
So what did we find in the bay recently?
Well, the way we, the way we counted is greater than 2,420 colonies, colony form.
Yeah, typically, we don't...
Where was that measurement taken?
We did one at the, where ADEM tests on the beach, which is about half the way, half the way down the beach, down the duck pond.
Just before the duck pond.
And then we took two samples, a main sample and then a duplicate sample right at the steps of the beach where our racers would come out of the water.
Do we, do we know what the origin of that is? Do we know if it's a bird origin, human origin?
Well, yeah, I wish I could say specifically and exactly, but we do know that the fluorometer values, the optical brighteners that I talked about earlier came back moderate. So I think that there's some human waste involved in that, but exactly what the origin is, I mean, we get a bunch of rain like that, we start to see the bays choppy as it is, we're going to have some sewage coming in. There weren't a lot of overflows, but we have, I was talking to Maus the other day. They're talking about when they first started their inspection program, they put a video in a, in a pipe and they looked and there was no top on it. And they started getting in there and half the bottom was gone, you know. So even without spills, when we have big rains, we can have some major issues. But then there's definitely a wildlife component. I'm sure how much is, is which percentage takes like the DNA testing to really be able to...
What's the goose population at the beach right now? I hadn't heard anybody talking about that.
187.
What, how much?
187 according to Larry...
That was last year.
He said he counted yesterday. I ran into him this morning, said he counted yesterday, 187 geese.
Thank you, John.
He walked on the other side.
That's the first question I always ask is, is it up, hovering near 200 again?
Well, yeah, and I think when we start to see those, because, you know, we're, we're talking in three places, two places, three samples, three times in a row, greater than 2,440, I think we're probably seeing some influence from, from sewage and septic. I kind of imagine that that, not being the expert on that, you know, somebody else may be able to tell you how high those geese can, can make the values, but it seems like when we're seeing values that high.
Can we get it tested? I mean, is there a simple test or can we send it to the lab?
There's DNA testing that y'all can do.
Prior, we sent samples to Auburn University. I know a few years ago, can we, can we help you? Can we assist you, help us in finding the origin?
Definitely. We can do DNA testing, which is the next step in any of these to really be able to identify. And it is more costly, but if Auburn or somebody like that will work with us to do it, then it can be not cost prohibitive. I don't, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
Yeah, we can do the research on it and figure it out. I think the other thing we figured out is if y'all, if y'all want us to continue to help and do any other monitoring moving forward, we'd love to follow the, the leadership of Richard Peterson and his team into where we should do it. And then I think we also found that what we need is wet weather rather than just, rather than what we did, which was weekly, making sure we had a comprehensive look on a regular basis. So we would want to, we'd want to look at wet weather testing moving forward too. I don't think we need to do DNA testing every single time, but right now, understanding what's going on at the bay, is it the ducks or is it people? And I think, you know, Kate said earlier that, that the numbers are so high that it's unlikely that it is just one source of anything, but it would be really good to rule it out or rule it in.
That is so high. I mean, even if it came from, I can't see a scenario. We haven't had that much rain, even with the storm and wind, we just didn't have that much rain this weekend. So it's, it's perplexing that it's that high. But we know that the geese are here this time of the year. And I don't want to keep blaming everything on the geese, but there is a correlation.
There really could be. And being able to point, to rule it out or rule it in is, would be really important next step, I think.
What's the, what's the cost of doing that testing ballpark?
Yeah, I don't have them offhand. Some, Mike Shelt maybe will speak to that, I think, or Richard, I'm not sure offhand. We can find out shortly though. We can let you guys know for sure.
Spend money doing a study, then spend money getting rid of the geese might be easier just getting rid of some geese. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I, I don't think it's that simple though.
Lights don't work.
No.
The season's just hit again, so we're gonna, but they did work.
But I do think, we, we're, I mean, I'm excited about the $10 million that'll come shortly for y'all to do some upgrading and, and infrastructure, but you've got, you've got a rehab problem. You've got old lines. One of the biggest, my first campaign ever with Mobile Bay Keeper, August would be 20 years ago, was Mobile Water and Sewer Service. And they were, they would have a line break and they would fix it, put a Band-Aid on it. Fair Hope is the place where people come to enjoy the water. And y'all are not the community that should be putting Band-Aids on something as big and important as sewage, sewage in our bay. We've got really good opportunities coming up and I think that if, if we can encourage, love, help, cajole, if I need to get the entirety of the city of Fair Hope out here to talk to y'all, I don't want to be crazy, but we need...
I don't think that's necessary.
But we need, we need, we need to really, we need y'all to know, we need to invest in sewage treatment upgrades. It's just important.
And the exciting thing is that we got some forward momentum. I, I mentioned to Richard the other day when we were chatting, I was, I was thankful for Fair Hope doing the study. I had been talking to some other utility operators and we were talking about, some folks don't want to pull back the rug and see what's going on. So pulling back the rug and seeing what's going on is a, is an impressive step. And so it's good, you know, that we're, we're ready to take those next steps. And of course, you know, we see high bacteria values, I mentioned a couple of times, y'all aren't the only culprit, just so that folks on, on Facebook or whatever else that see the headline, understand that there's a lot of things going on, right? The main source is not just Fair Hope. We just have to, y'all have the opportunity to take care of what's going on in Fair Hope.
The simple thing, we can be here instead of...
We should take the lead.
But Casey, I want to say something though. You said our treatment.
Yes, sorry.
And it's, it's not our treatment.
No, no, no.
You're absolutely right. It's not a treatment problem.
Treatment system is at 52% capacity. It's collection system that's taking it there and it's overwhelming the treatment system.
And that, that has, that's on residents as well as the city. So we all, we, I mean, doing a smoke test is a really easy way to figure out if it's the resident or the line and the, the lift station and what part belongs to the city of Fair Hope and what part belongs to residents. Because if, if you've got a nice little oak tree going through your line and you're putting, you know, stormwater into that system, it's, it's on us as well. So I think we, we've got to collectively work on this situation, but you were absolutely right. Your collection, your treatment system is great. It's all about making sure we can get it to the plant.
Without overwhelming.
Agreed.
Yeah, thank you for correcting that.
Questions, counsel? Comments?
Thank y'all.
I'd like to see, yes, some calls to that testing, and I think it's, we need to do it by its spike.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can make it happen quickly.
I mean, if it's probably, I think it's a low enough number, the mayor can just authorize it up. I don't think you have to come back to counsel. It should be a pretty low number.
We talked about the, and how to do the...
I can't imagine it being, I, I'm thinking it's well under the $500 range, but I don't know.
The mayor would handle it.
They don't, you know, they've already talked and, you know, agreed on, you know, priorities of, of what to test and the recommendations, you know, that the study's already said and the hierarchy of what needs to be addressed first, we presented. And the best way to do that, like she just said, and Richard recommended, was the smoke test and things like this. But this isn't a one-time project. This isn't ongoing.
The immediate acute need for this huge spike that we have getting that tested.
No, I'm saying just ongoing forever. I mean, this is, it's not a project, it's, it's just ongoing. We always will need to have it when we have this many miles of sewer and we're just going to add on to it. And in that department, we do need to even get ready for the funding for all of the rehabilitation that we'll be doing next year with the money from Restore. So there's a lot that can be started now, but we have to have the personnel to do it and we're just in totally actionary mode right now.
Yeah, I think for long-term testing, we might even consider getting a volunteer corps, giving them kits. I know John could probably test the bay for us down at the pier weekly. He volunteered to do that and others to technically do that.
And we have a program where we can train folks. The, the system that we use is not a volunteer system. Volunteer collection, great, but we process it in the lab. So we, but we have the materials and the tools to do all of that good stuff. But we can absolutely train folks to help us with this and put it together, save us on some travel costs and time. But, but we need y'all to do whatever prayers you do and dances you do so that we can have a Grand Man Triathlon as opposed to a duathlon. So we'll test, we're testing every day and we'll get the final results, 24 hours, it takes 24 hours for the results to come.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Casey. Thanks, Kate. All right, counsel, it's 4:30.
5:30.
Our 5:30, 4:30, 5:30. It's 4:30 somewhere.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask for, is it okay for us to post our report final and make it public now? Do y'all want to do that?
Yeah.
We'll get it on our website tonight. Thank you.
I want to ask you, counsel, to, if you have committee updates to give on during your council comments, we have a very lengthy agenda. There may be some questions about that that we can cover over the next 30 minutes. Can we just jump into the agenda and go through that? Okay. Where's Wayne? Is Wayne here?
He's on the phone.
Okay. All right, so we'll bring up number five, public hearing. You will brief the counsel on the Fairfield case.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dice is at town, so I'll fill in for him.
Okay, number six. Who's going to discuss that? Procedure for sidewalk street usage.
Probably Shirley or Michael.
Who's going to discuss item six?
Shirley.
Jeremy's here. He just stepped in. Sixty seconds.
Okay.
It's the new face.
Item eight. So Liz will hear. Talk about that again.
No.
Who's going to, who will speak to that if we have questions?
I should.
Okay, you can do that. That's the first reading of that, I thought.
Correct.
Number nine, I know that, number nine, Chief Pettis, I don't know if y'all saw that, the other, some information from other local police departments. Do you want to look through that real quick? Does anybody have any changes they think they want to make to that? On nine, 15-mile radius within Ballin County. I looked, I looked through all of the, the other police departments and then it was kind of just right in, you know, kind of right in line with, with a lot of the others. I mean, not exactly the same, but I thought it was definitely right in the sweet spot.
Yeah, yeah, no. One of the things that Mayor and I were talking about is, is limiting it to Ballin County. And I think one of the things that I mentioned or that came up when we had that discussion in the work session last time is when you look at that cone...
that, the other, some information from other local police departments. Do you want to look through that real quick? Does anybody have any changes they think they want to make to that?
No.
On nine, at 15-mile radius within Ballin County? I looked, I looked through all of the, the other police departments and then it was kind of just right in, you know, kind of right in line with, with a lot of the others. I mean, not exactly the same, but I thought it was definitely right in the sweet spot.
Yeah, yeah, no. One of the things that Mayor and I were talking about is, is limiting it to Ballin County. And I think one of the things that I mentioned or that came up when we had that discussion in the work session last time, is when you look at that cone-
Longest time you had to live within the city limits of Fairhope. And this is fairly relaxed.
Yeah, I don't-
And we want to encourage people that are, we want to encourage our police officers to be invested in our community.
Yeah. And I, and I don't think even if we, even if we changed it to 10 miles from the police jurisdiction, that it would get into Mobile. I mean, I don't, you know, I mean, that's, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue with, with it as proposed, 15 miles from the police station. But I just wanted to at least bring up those concerns, at least with limiting it to that.
Yeah. Yeah, 10 miles from the police jurisdiction. If you add 10 miles to- Well, I'd say our police jurisdiction is three, if you go three miles from, once again, I kind of use that airport property as the most distant property. Three miles from there is the police jurisdiction. And then you go 10 miles from there, you're six, nine, you're 19 miles from the center, center of the city. It gets to be out there good ways.
That's right. But I mean, it just, you know-
I'm just trying to give you a perspective.
No, no, no. But, but by limiting it to police headquarters, that, I mean, that assumes that what they're responding to in those police vehicles is going to be in the center of town as opposed to in that nine-mile perimeter that they're going to be, you know.
Well, I guess the reason I supported the 15 miles was if it was, if it was going to be from any other point, I would, you know, I'd say ratchet back. There are still those that, you know, Daphne must live in the police jurisdiction, blocks of 10 miles of the police jurisdiction, 10 miles of the corporate buildings, 10 miles of the city limits. I don't know. It doesn't seem, I'll do whatever y'all want to do. It doesn't seem too, it seems pretty different.
Yeah, I mean, it's not much different. I mean, I don't think 15 miles from-
Somebody's going to get left out.
Yeah, no, no. There's no way to get everybody in unless you just say everybody can take them home. It's just finding what, what is appropriate under the circumstances. I mean, there is no perfect answer to this.
No. You're not going to make it up.
Well, the one, I can't remember where, which one it was, but had, where they had to pay.
Yeah, that's Kissimmee, Florida.
Kissimmee, Florida. Yeah, outside.
And I think one of the things Chief Pettis said, another reason that I'm remembering now about limiting it to, at least in the Ballin County venue, is, you know, they, they can take them home, but they're not supposed to use them for personal use. And if you have them in, in the Ballin County window, it's easier to at least, there's less desire to do that because people see you at the grocery store and they see you everywhere else. And so.
It'd be my argument for keeping it in the police jurisdiction. Fair police cars, fair police jurisdiction. I mean, it makes sense. I was in Gulf Shores today and I think I saw a Daphne police car down there and I thought, what in the world is-
Sometimes they're trans, sometimes they're doing that.
I still slow down even when I see a Daphne police car.
Oh, yeah. I do.
Even if I'm not speeding, I hit the brakes. I'm just one of them.
But considering, you know, an allocation for whatever it is outside the police jurisdiction could be a possibility, something to think about.
I mean, it's a perk is what it is.
Well, that would be deducted.
Oh, you're talking about that. I'm, I'm saying to let them take them home. It's just a job perk. I understand doing it in the police jurisdiction because there's a benefit because if that car's parked at their house or, or at the grocery store, wherever, it's in the police jurisdiction. So it has at least the appearance that they're on patrol.
I do want to emphasize, though, that going to the police station, clocking in, getting the car and do it-
Is a hassle, inefficient.
I don't think it, I think it's more than 1%. I mean, they're, and for every day-
Why would we ever tell them to stop? Why wouldn't we just tell them to go directly to the incident and not work and clock in later? I mean, why would we demand they come clocking?
Well, can't they, didn't we hear, I mean, can't we-
That's ridiculous.
Well, didn't we discuss that last time?
They get paid off of what they clock in.
But if they're in the car-
If they're at an incident, we know they're there. It's a accident report.
They still have to get the, they still have to get the car.
They're also the secondary.
Would you please, I thank you, sir. What you said, Mr. Morales, exactly correct. In that, but that, having that take home car is what enables you to go straight to that incident. And so like we have an officer, one of our sergeants who lives literally maybe a mile and a half outside of the jurisdiction on 104. And he drives by, MBAs, crashes on the way to work. So he can get in his police car and respond. And this gives you the ability to respond directly to the, to the scene. Now, other officers that we had to live inside the jurisdiction, who do have to take home cars, they do just that. And it really helps the workload. If you're fixing to get off your shift at 6 o'clock and a wreck comes out at Walmart, and one of the guys coming to work from that direction stops and is able to work that wreck, which enables you to clock out on time and go home. So that's the, the benefit to the city in taking home the car. And also, excuse me-
So let me back up. So the call comes in. What, the people that are on duty are not the ones that are going to go and respond?
Oh, no, we are. But what we're saying is, is it, it, those transitional periods during the day where we're changing shifts, most officers are up there finishing reports, finishing up paperwork, getting ready to clock out and go home. And if a wreck comes in right at shift change, an officer who's in that area in their take-home vehicle can respond directly to that crash and just start their shift a few minutes early, as opposed to an officer having to respond all the way from the police department and then have to come back, clock out, get his personal car. It adds more time. But it also, I mean, you know, they drive by violations at times, you know. There's on, on the way into work, DUIs, you name it. I mean, there's several officers that make arrests on the way-
But you're making an argument respectfully, Lieutenant Hammer, for everybody to have a take-home vehicle. And we're just trying to put a, a bound on it.
Yeah, yeah. But no, I'm not saying everybody.
I know you're not. But what, but you, you don't realize you are, basically you are. Because if somebody's coming in from 30 miles, 40 miles, same thing's going to happen when they're coming to the shift. And it's got to be some reasonable distance. And this is a heck of a lot looser than, than it was.
Oh, yeah. I don't, and I, I could agree with you 100%. I don't, I'm not for being able to take it home in, you know, without any sound.
Yes, it's got to draw a line somewhere, is what I'm saying.
And it's the crow flies. I agree with what you say there, too. I mean, Dolphin Island may be 20 miles from the police department. It's the crow flies. But it's a whole lot further to drive. So I, I think that the 15 miles from the station is actually pretty fair and generous. And what I, my point was, that, that radius that you're talking about enables officers to respond to calls on their way into work, which takes some of the burden off of the people who are already on shift. And also will eliminate some overtime.
Didn't, is Chief Pettis, was it, was-
Sounds good.
Was Chief Pettis, did he make a recommendation, that's the last time he was here, as to what he thought was-
He was in favor of the 15.
Yeah.
So that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if somebody wants to make an amendment, you know, you can. I want us to have that quick discussion in here. So when we get to it, you'll, you maybe want to think about it and make a suggestion. You have that right. Site plan approval for the Century Bank? Number 11 has to do with the grants, application for the roundabout. How's that so lengthy, Clark? Why are there three parts to that?
You may want to ask Richard that question.
Okay. Richard, why are there three parts to that resolution?
Come, come up here. It's kind of a bundle. And, you know, I reckon we could have done it in three different resolutions. But, you know, basically, what we need to do to make the application is authorize the mayor to sign it. Okay? Two, they want a resolution that states that we understand by making this application, if we are awarded it, 10% match is our responsibility. And then the caveat, since Volkert did the original plans from 2008, there's a cost savings to keep them as the engineer of record. And that was a, a, I want to use a requirement, but a, a suggestion and recommendation from ALDOT that we don't, that we need to designate them as the EOR and stay with them because it'd be a cost savings. So those are the three things we're trying to accomplish in this resolution and thus the three parts.
So typically, we break the selection of and then the establish the fee. And are we going to get a chance to accept the fee?
Absolutely. And that's why I added at the UC under number two at the end, with appropriation by future resolution. So that you're, you're just acknowledging that, hey, we understand it's a 10% match, but we're not, we haven't appropriated that. And the next is that authorizing us to work through federal highway to get the fees worked out and bring that back to you for council resolution.
Makes sense. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 12, this was a resolution to authorize the marina manager to set the price of the fuel. I'll say that Kevin and I and Tom Cool met with Drew last week and came up with a pretty simple formula to establish those costs. And the factors were to keep it competitive, to not try to undercut everybody in town so that, you know, we sell all the gas. And there's, you say there's not other marinas that we're competing with, but there are. Because people will go to gas stations and buy alcohol-free gas and go put in their boats. And although that's not allowed, we can't police that all the time. And so if you don't, if you don't set it right, they will, they will do that. Did we get the, did we get the pumps working, Drew?
Is this thing working?
Yes.
As far as pumping, we are still dealing with a couple of warranty issues. The gentleman are coming back in the morning. And then we're also, Alabama tank is going to come down and replace some ball valves that need to be replaced that are very, very stiff, which doesn't have anything to do with us with fueling. Today, I learned how to program the register. And then tomorrow, hopefully, I'll learn how to program the Fuel Master. And they get the keys and stuff working. I'm hoping we are pumping fuel by Friday.
Awesome.
100% running. And then I'm also waiting for the, I'm having a riser built for the waste core, the waste pump out, which brings it up, the pedestal, so we can mount the pedestal on it. Makes it a little bit easier for us to pump out and route some plow and stuff.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about that?
What was the formula?
Formula. It's something like 1.305 times the purchase price of the diesel. And you have, we have to add tax onto the diesel. When we purchase the gasoline, it's already been taxed. So we don't have to add tax onto the gasoline. It's 1.225. So the difference of 8%. And I don't know why we can't want that extra half a percent on it, on the diesel to add on. But it was, that's the way it came out. And it kept us just below, just a few cents below other marinas, but not, you know, but just still trying to make, make a fair price out of it, give people a value without trying to undercut the competition that, you know, compete against our own businesses. So there are none in Fairhope. There are in other parts of the county. Any other questions on that? Compensation job classification plan. That's Lynch job. She could be legit. Anybody have any questions about that? He'll, he'll talk about that if we do. Is there an HR person? I don't want to ask you about that.
Giving up bias, I think.
Number 14, change order number three to the Coyle Creek Clubhouse in the mountain. Who can talk to that? Richard? You want to just go ahead and tell us that now? Maybe save us a few minutes?
Just kind of as a precursor, when you're doing a remodel and you start pulling things off, you find things you did not expect. The, the most major part of that 16,000, if you got the change order in your hand. And again, it was, I did not realize the extent of this. If you recall, for those that've been around, that building had a wraparound porch that went all the way around all four sides of the original building. And that porch was enclosed a great portion of it. And let's just say, when we pulled the lower siding off, we found an issue with how the, the new exterior walls ties into that old extent of that porch. So the, the controlling factors here is H and J, which is dealing with that perimeter, to actually put a proper stem wall under that porch, saw cut off the overhang to prevent that water catch, and do it as correctly as we can. And those two items together, if you add them up, it's about 11,000, about 16,000. The other items are some issues with doors that were, needed to be eliminated to stay in ADA compliant, as well as just some features of the building that were originally going to be preserved, such as the banding on the top and the banding on the bottom, that just did not work with the, with the exterior hardy board and such. And we were just concerned that, that the look was not going to look good. And it was going to look kind of partially done. I know Councilman Brown has joined us out there and seen some of the horrors that were uncovered as part of demolition. But it's just one of those things that, that they discovered in, in the controlling factory is definitely that foundation work, which is that 9,000 plus the flashing to make sure we had a watertight connection when we're finished there.
Did you see all that, Ron?
Yes, we did at that old church up there. Same thing with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 15. Fluoride. Stand to purchase. Everybody still in favor of fluoride?
Yes.
Y'all getting any bids on this? Mayor, you ready?
Okay.
All right. 16. Travel, repair. Fairhope docs for the wreck department. Got no bids. So we, we should rescind them if we get another call. 17. Who's going to talk about those light packages? Who will discuss those for the police vehicles? So we're, we're eliminating the, the add-on packages? Could you tell us about that? If I, if I'm not mistaken, instead of buying the light packages separately, we're going to buy them equipped from the dealer? And it's going to be included in the purchase price? It comes out cheaper? Is that right?
Yes. We had, we had bid it out and then we wanted to reject the bid. And we saw we could get it on the state contract. And it would be, I think it's identical to what the 2018 Tahoe's would be, the package would be.
So it does, it looks like it saves us, well, it's still under budget. I'm not exactly sure what it saves us. But how much did it save us? Well, that's budget. That's just cost to budget. That's not cost to what it would be if we bought it the other way.
A bit. I think the bid may have actually been lower, but we would have had to reject it. There were some discussions during bidding that should have taken place. So we would have had to go out for a rebid.
Okay. So we got them off the state bid?
We, yeah. We can rebid them, but then we decided we could go to the state bid.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Standby. Safe span for professional bid bridge inspections. If we have questions about that, Richard? The outfall assessment and repairs. That's for the effluent from the sewer treatment plant. Richard, would that be, or Richard Peterson?
Richard Peterson. Richard Peterson.
Fire hoses, camera systems. Who's going to talk about the camera systems for the police? Four-in-car and six-body camera systems. Who can answer questions about that?
I don't think anyone answered questions for Mr. Rell, another one involved in that whole other.
Well, I guess, you know, if I was to ask, you know, four-in-car and six-body cameras with the applicable accessories, so basically 10, like for $31,000, is this what we have? Just what every officer has?
Yes, sir, it's a, well, we're kind of moving into a new system where the body camera works in sync with the vehicle camera so that they pick up and come on at the same time and all that stuff. Where before the system that we have were two totally different systems.
Is this where we're buying them incrementally, though? We kind of purchased some last year, some this year, broke it up the budget?
Yes, sir.
Because it was about $90,000 last year.
Right, they're expensive. They're expensive.
And then I think it automatically uploads things to the cloud or?
So as long as it has internet service, it automatically downloads, which keeps, doesn't create a space problem for officers having to download.
So I'll just put you down if we have some more questions on that. What equipment and install? God, I may need you again. What's the difference on 22 and number 17? Equipment and installation for the four Tahos?
We've already got some that have not, as she was saying earlier, the vehicles that we're buying, this particular Tahoe, come in equipped with all the lights and emergency packages. The Tahos that we bought on last year's budget that was approved, you know, sometime later, those do not have the lights. We have to have those installed and we have to purchase that equipment there, is the way I understand it.
Are there, is, are there, is the equipment that's going on, the 2018's the same as going on 2017's? We were getting packages for five Tahos for 30,000.
They're, they're a little different. The, the ones you're looking at for the 2018 actually come with a package that's, that's inside the vehicle. It's a little less expensive than what we're purchasing that goes on top of the vehicles. That's why I think that's one of the reasons they moved to get them straight from the factory with the equipment in it because it is a less expensive option.
Is that being off a state bid out of 22?
Mm-hmm. That was a state, first of all, yes.
Okay. Because I was looking at the cost per vehicle, one 7,000, the others 6,000.
Is part of that being the difference when they come in installed by themselves?
Well, actually, the, the new ones are more expensive. Yeah. Yes, it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, we, the, the light bars, that's the, all the accessories that, right now, the ones we have don't have ELS iron or anything in them, so this is all the equipment to, to get them in line with the vehicles we already have in service. We can't really utilize them until we have some packages there.
All right, one might ask you. Thank you, sir. Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and adjourn. We got a couple of minutes before 6:00, so try to get back here in about five minutes and we'll just pick up the rest as we go with the land.